Call to all of the City of Forest Park. City Council Meeting Number 1230. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
Congratulations to the United States of America and the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk call to roll, please.
Burns.
Here.
Cottle.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lives.
Here.
Southall.
Here.
All members are present. Next item on the agenda, item number two of the minutes. If you all received copies of the minutes in your packets, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three would be presentations. We have two tonight. The first of these would be an oath of office for a police lieutenant, chief, and police lieutenant to be awarded. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Did you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, and state your name.
Aye, James Gregory Ward.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
Of the municipality.
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As police lieutenant.
As police lieutenant.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Gregory. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I'd like to thank my wife for always supporting me. I would like to thank my mom and dad for always showing the proper way to do things. As you travel the journey, you find that there's certain people that help you along the way, and as time passes, sometimes you forget, and they disappear, and then you wish that you were able to say something. So I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to Lieutenant Jeff Larche and Lieutenant Bill Orange. Through my career, they've stood by me, shown me the right way, even though sometimes I didn't want to do what they wanted me to do. But in the end, when they could have walked away, they stood fast and helped me move along. I would also like to thank Bob Wright, who was my very first field training officer. His tutelage and his wisdom helped me to make good choices. I would also like to thank my chief, who through his passion and his wisdom, always works to keep this place moving in the right direction. There's been a few occasions where I felt his foot in my backside. So I appreciate that, and his sense of passion, and always helping us to remember what we're supposed to do. I thank you.
For the presentation of the lieutenant's badge and his rank, and his lovely wife,
Let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Lieutenant Jim Ward. He's worked for our agency for 23 years. He started as our auxiliary police officer in 1988. In 1990, he was hired by us as a full-time police officer. Over the course of his career, he has worked as a crime scene investigator, detective, officer in charge, field training officer, field training program training coordinator -- I didn't write that, he wrote that part of it -- training topic instructor, training officer, training program supervisor, and road patrol sergeant. He has taught at Clark State Community College. He has also taught at the Ohio Peace Officer Training Academy, as well as Scarlet Oaks Basic Academy. He's been recognized by the Hamilton County Police Association, the Federal Order of Police, Green Hills Fire Department, the Forest Park Fire Department, DARE, the Cincinnati Citizens Police Academy, and the American Legion. Jim is a graduate of CLE, which is Certified Law Enforcement Executives College, which that's over a year-long process that he has to go through of studies that it takes him a year or two to accomplish that feat. And he just graduated, I believe, this year, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So. And his wife, we saw her putting on the bars. She's very familiar with that, because she's a lieutenant with the Green Hills Police Department. Jim is a very hard worker. He's very dedicated, and he has that passion also. And we're very fortunate to have a person of his caliber to be on our staff and in our police department, and care about the city as much as he does. So congratulations on behalf of the police department, and my personal congratulations to you for your achievements.
Hold on just a minute, please. Any comments from members of council, Councilman Lives?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to congratulate you more on behalf of the citizens and residents of Forest Park. Thank you for keeping us safe, along with all the other members of our fantastic police department. I know when I drive by one of those cars, you can't always see who's in there, but, you know, we knew you were doing a good job for us. And I have your baseball card that you have, and it's got -- on the right, it says, "Do the Right Thing," which we sure are agreeable with that. And the hair is a lot longer in here. Is that working? Okay, well, these are -- I forget when these came out. But thank you very, very much for your service, and congratulations.
Councilman Barnes.
Yes. Jim, thank you for staying with us. You know, 23 years is a long time, and it shows a lot of dedication, you know, that I'm sure that your parents instilled in you as you came up as a youth, and those values are still coming straight forward in your presence. Thank you for being here. Congratulations to you and your family, and many years of great service back to the city.
Councilwoman Herbie.
Thank you, Jim. I really appreciate the years of service you've dedicated to Forest Park, but I also want to thank you for acknowledging those people that have guided you, because that's a very strong ethic within our city, that, and particularly in the police department, there's a real expectation of excellence that's passed down, and you stand on shoulders, and you will have strong shoulders that people will stand on who come after you. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Holt.
I would just like to say congratulations to you. You're with a great force, and because you're on it, it makes it greater. So thanks for your many years of service, and I hope to see you in about 23 more years here. Congratulations.
Everyone else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, item B, Oath of Office. Captain Bill Orange. I have to give my cheaters, because I can't read without them. There you go. Did you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? Aye, and state your name.
Aye, William Orange.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
Of the municipality.
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As captain of the police department.
As captain of the police department.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
It's kind of -- this is surreal. It was 34 years ago that I came to the police department as a 15-year-old police explorer, never dreaming that this day would ever come. But because of so many people that were in my life, my parents, they encouraged me, and although there were some reservations about choosing law enforcement as a career, they finally accepted that, and they encouraged me and continued to just push me in that direction. My wife, my children are all here. All those shift -- days of shift work and holidays, they dealt with it, and never once did they ever say, "Why did you ever choose this career?" They were very supportive. My sister and my brother-in-law are here as well. Chief Cannon was one of my mentors when I was a teenager. Him, Ken Hughes, Steve Almer, the list can go on, including those that have retired and even passed away. I thank all the current members that are here every day. You guys support me. Even when you don't think you are, you do. Bob Wright, Jim Ward, thank you for the great words. And I especially want to thank Lieutenant Jeff Larche and Lieutenant Rick Jones. We were all sergeants together. We worked as a great team, and I fully expect that we'll continue to work as a great team. And I thank you guys for all your support. And again, thanks to the City Council for your support, and me as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, for the presentation of the credentials of police captain, assistant chief, and his lovely wife, Jen.
And a little bit about Captain Orange. I guess officially, he's a 27-year veteran of the police department, but as he said, he's actually a 34-year veteran of this organization in some shape or form. Him and his family are here from Forest Park. They've lived in Forest Park since 1973. He's a graduate of Forest Park High School. At high school, at 15-years-old, he decided to join the Forest Park Police Department Explorers. He remained as an explorer cadet until 21, and we had to kick him out. He wanted to stay longer, at which time he accepted a position as an auxiliary police officer with us, and a part-time clerk dispatcher. Bill attended the University of Cincinnati, obtained an associate's degree in law enforcement. He also attended the Hamilton County Sheriff's Police Academy and earned his certification through that academy. In August of 1987, he was hired as a full-time police officer. He didn't get it right the first time, so we sent him back to the academy, Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy, earning his commission again for the second time. While a patrol officer, Bill served as department's traffic safety officer from 1994 to the year 2000, and as a detective from 2001 to 2002. In December 2002, Bill was promoted to sergeant. He served as the road patrol sergeant until his promotion to lieutenant in 2007. During his time as a lieutenant, he commanded the criminal investigation section, and most recently, he's been the commander of the staff service division. He's also a graduate of the Police Executive Leadership College and the Northwest University School of Police Staff and Command. He's here tonight with his wife, Jennifer, his four boys, Elijah, Zach, Philip, and Samrell, and his parents. I have a special connection with Bill. I was the advisor here when he came on as the police cadet. I think he was actually a captain as a police cadet. Now he's made it all the way up to the ranks of a captain as a police officer. And I remember many, many days, Bill and I -- he rode with me a lot. Bill and I were together -- in fact, you probably owe me a lot of money for the food and stuff that we -- I did for this young man. My gosh. But it's a very special honor for me tonight with Bill. Today, I had the opportunity to go to Columbus and visit the State Highway Patrol Academy and had lunch with our three recruits that are up there, who are in their 14th week of training, and who will be finishing up in another four weeks. And I noticed that as they're beginning their journey, as Jim mentioned, these two are now adding another chapter to their journey in leadership. And again, we're very fortunate and very lucky to have men and police officers of this caliber to be part of this organization, and I'm very proud to be standing here at this particular moment with these two individuals for this honor. So congratulations again from the police department, and from me personally, congratulations. I never thought it would happen either, but it did.
Councilman Lives?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate you also. I know it's been a long time. It seems like since you were captain before, and now you are again, so it's a good journey. But again, thank you for your service to the city. I have your card, too, and it says on the back, "Love, Honor, and Above Yourself," which I think is kind of neat in other words. And your hair looks almost the same, but yeah, I know, I've had that problem, too. The light blonde comes out. But again, thank you in taking the challenge every day in your job, and looking forward to your future.
Councilwoman Cottle.
Bill, thank you for the support and your promotion today, and also thank you for the support you give our youth at Dayspring Church of God. It means a lot to me because you're sometimes in the background, sometimes forward, but the youth and the children look up to you there, and you've given a lot of advice and support to them, and I want to thank you for that.
Councilwoman Holt.
Bill, I want to say congratulations, and I admire the fact that you are a Forest Park resident, so I think it's more personal to you, and you're going to take care of your own. I really appreciate that. I admire that, that you're working in your city. So again, congratulations and thanks for protecting the citizens and the city that you live.
Councilwoman Herbie.
I would echo Councilman Holt's remarks about being a longtime resident, and you grew up here, and you've been dedicated to this community for a long time. But one of the interesting things I noted while you were doing the oath, I was watching your family, and I could just see the pride on their faces, particularly the one son back there, just beaming from ear to ear. And we're all proud of you. We're all proud of the fact that you are a hometown boy, and we're very glad. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Barnes.
Bill, I just want to say congratulations to you and your family, and thank your family for allowing us to borrow you as often as we do and have. Having grown up with a police officer, I understand that, you know, every day, you just never know what you could come across, you know? And to be here for 27 years, you know, slash 34, is a great testimony to your commitment to the city and to the residents of this city, you know? And the other piece is, you know, both you and Jim have displayed today a great example of transition. You know, that's one of the great things about being an American, is that we can honor each other as we transition and ascend to our various levels, you know, in a peaceful and respectful way. And, you know, and you are a great example of that, as is Jim. And I thank you for your character, and Jim as well. You guys are great people, and I look forward to working with you more and more. Thank you.
Councilman Southall.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate you, Bill. Congratulations as well. A lot has been said about the fine work that you've done. I'd also like to say that also I'm looking for the -- looking forward to working with you, and also Jim Ward and your new promotion. Congratulations to you. So thank you both.
You know, oftentimes, especially in the arena of sports, we hear about college teams and professional teams, even some teams at the high school level. We often hear people say, "Well, they're rebuilding." We don't rebuild. We reload and we move on. And we're able to do that because of men like Bill Orange and Jim Ward, people who, as one of the other councilpeople said, allow those who are behind them to use them to move upward, just as they were helped upward by others before them. No, that's a real good feeling to know that we never have to start from scratch. We just continue to grow and to grow and to grow, but in that growing process, we just continue to also get better and better and better and better. I can't tell you how important that is, not only to us as councilpeople, but to the citizens of Forest Park, to know that there's never any drop-off. The level and the quality of the police department today continues from the level of the police department 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and it will be the same 10 years from now and 20 years from now because of that process. That's what makes our department great. That's what makes our department the best. And none of that could happen or could take place without the leadership that we've had all throughout the ranks, especially at the top. We have leaders who are not afraid, are not insecure, so much so that they hold other people back. If anything, they go out of their way to make sure that those behind them have every opportunity, and is given every opportunity, to grow and to move forward. That's what makes us grow. That's what makes us best. And thank you, both Jim and Bill, and thank the families, because they couldn't be where they are today without your support. And as Councilman Burns said, we wouldn't have them if you didn't let us have them. So thank you very much, and I know you're going to continue to support them. We're going to continue to support them, and we're going to look out for each other just as we've done in the past. Thank you.
Okay, we would next be moving to item number four, communications from the public. However, before we make that move to item number four, this is the time when our audience may feel free to take your leave of us. Of course, you're more than welcome to stay if you want to stay and listen to what we're going to be talking about, but as I said, I know this is the time when most of you will choose to leave, and we won't -- our feelings won't be hurt if you do that. Thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. Sit down.
Congratulations.
Guys.
Thank you, sir.
Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to item number four, communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings will tape recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Mr. Smith, you got any comments? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number five, report of standing committees. The first of these standing committees would be Community Development Committee. Mr. Barnes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the school board members, as well as the superintendent who attended our last meeting prior to our last work session. I thought the meeting was very fruitful, and we do have a direction as far as our next meeting as a team to continue to work on behalf of both the city and as well as the school district. So, and also thank you councilmembers for being there. I thought everyone did a great job. Lastly, I'd just like to acknowledge a couple of people that are going to be celebrating anniversaries here in the next few days. Joanne Lee will celebrate her 35th year anniversary here in the next couple of days. And next week, prior to our -- before our next official meeting, Mike Rupp will be -- Rupp will be celebrating his 25th anniversary. So I'd just like to acknowledge them and congratulate them on a job well done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Barnes? Hearing now, Mr. Barnes, I have two items for you for the work session on the ninth. One is Community Development Block Grants Cooperation Agreement, and the second one is Building Department Overview. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no report this evening.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing now, Councilwoman Cottle, I have no items on the agenda for you for the meeting. Do you have any to add?
No, I don't.
Next committee report is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a human resource report, but for the beautification, I want everybody to know that the contest is this coming weekend, June 7th and 8th, I do believe. So you still have a few days to get all your flowers out and beautify your yard so you can get a flag. With that being said, that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing now, Councilwoman Holt, I have one item on the agenda for you for next week, and that is Board Commission Resignation. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, Public Safety Committee, Councilman Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No specific report, but we did as part of the Public Safety Committee. Want to again congratulate the officers on their promotions this evening, and we look forward to more of these in the future. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilman Lives? Hearing now, Councilman Lives, I have one item on the agenda for the work session. That's the labor contract with FOP officers and supervisors. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities Committee, Councilman Southall.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to report a couple items. The Forest Park seniors had their annual senior spring fling this past May 23rd, and the seniors had an evening of dancing and fellowship and fun. The seniors will be going to the Horseshoe Casino on Wednesday, June 11th, from 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So you might be interested in that. The Park and Recreation Commission, of course, will be meeting on Wednesday here in the municipal building, and they will be discussing mainly the upcoming recreational programs for the State National Premier League. Also, the under recreation, the Flyers were issued for the upcoming tennis program and the fall soccer program. Those were distributed to all the schools. Additional posters regarding these programs have been placed at the local daycare centers as well. Also, the Lyle Also, the Lyle Pow of the USTA certified instructor he is, Tony Brock, will be offering instructional tennis lessons beginning June 9th. Lessons run from Monday through Friday from 6:30 to 7:30. Rates for the previous years will stay in effect, namely $50 for two-week session for residents and $60 for two-week session for non-residents. And also, lastly, the Forest Park will continue to play in the Cincinnati, Cincy State Central Soccer Association. The association had a spring wrap-up meeting on Tuesday, May 27th, and at that meeting, issues and concerns concerning the spring season were addressed. That was the spring season that passed. So, the seniors, I'm not saying, excuse me, the youngsters will still be a part of that league. And Forest Park Girl Striker Team placed second in the spring tournament, losing to Sharonville. The fall soccer practices will begin in August. For the first competitive games of the season will be held September the 6th. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Southall, I have no items on the agenda for you for the meeting. Do you have any to add?
No, sir, I do not at this time.
Next committee is Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no Ways and Means committee meeting, but there are a number of programs being operated by the environmental awareness and one of the most recent ones to open is the Community Recycling Center, which is behind the municipal building here. And it's just recently opened. It is for those people who wish to recycle but don't have access to the Rumpke Recycling Program. So, I invite people who live in apartment complexes to save newspapers and bottles and plastic bottles as well, cans, and bring them over to the recycling center here. There are, as I said, a number of other programs, but I would direct you to the website, which is forestpark.org-environmental, reforesting Forest Park, the Echo Tier Program for Solid Waste, the Energy Efficiency Program, some summer programs. There are summer scholarships actually available for students, all of which you can look into at that site. So, I would direct you there and that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing non, Councilwoman Herbie, I have two items on the agenda for you. One is the salary ordinance and the second one is EDC Project slash Q Laboratory. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next committee, standing committee report is Inon Governmental Relations and Communications. That is my committee. I have no specific report. And I have one item on the agenda. That item is for, we will just be discussing the summer recess. I would ask any questions if there are any. Hearing non, we'll move to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just like to report that I did attend the spring fling for seniors. Mr. Hodges was also there along with Councilman Southall. I thought it was a very nice event. I think everybody had a good time. There were, I believe the last count that I saw was about 110 people. That was very well done. And I want to comment on the seniors and their group or their committees for putting that together. Mr. Smith, if you would pass that on to the group. That would, in my report, I would answer any questions if there are any. Hearing non, the next item on the agenda, item number seven, the City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. It's important to note that we are working with several business prospects and it's a bit encouraging at this point. These are not necessarily major businesses, but as far as our small business community, they're very important for us to help them possibly locate in Forest Park or expand in Forest Park. So, the main point is it's a bit encouraging at this point in time of the year. Finally, I would report that the departmental reports have been completed. They've been included in the council packet, also placed on file with the Clerk of Council for public inspection. That would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Mr. Hodges? Hearing non, thank you, sir. We would then move to item number eight, other reports. The first of those being the Law Director's Report, Mr. Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, a number of important cases have come out of different courts involving municipal issues. One, as shared with Chief Cannon and Mr. Hodges, up in Columbus, a police officer was, by the 10th District Court Appeals, was granted immunity when he chased, shot, and killed a suspect. And the court clarified that the important issue was the perspective of the police officer in applying sovereign immunity and not really looking at hindsight or detailed facts that in this instance were easily missed on the day of the incident in darkness. So, that helps clarify how sovereign immunity applies to police officers, particularly in use of force. The Supreme Court of Ohio addressed, you might remember all the Occupy protests, well, they had an Occupy Cleveland in a public park. Cleveland's park laws are you cannot stay there overnight between certain hours unless you have a permit and the Supreme Court upheld that restriction despite arguments of First Amendment and freedom of assembly. The rationale being that the city of Cleveland does not make their restriction anything other than neutral based. In other words, it applies to everybody and it's not a complete restriction of one's free speech or right of assembly because sidewalks were still open and available and other areas, this applied only to parks. And then lastly, just Friday, I got notice of appellate decision out of Cogga County that when we talk about property nuisance issues, even if an owner who has been cited sells that property, that owner is responsible for all the previous conduct and only the new owner will be liable only from the date of purchase forward. So, if someone is cited, in this case, had multiple citations, despite the fact that years later they sold the property, the city still prosecuted the individual despite the fact he no longer had ownership because the violations did occur while he was the owner. So, that was, that's also a very useful case. It clarifies an issue that has always been tossed around as being uncertain. And then finally, as you know, I recommended a change as far as condemned property, trying to stop some of our trespass issues. And the issue with 803X Moore has proceeded. They filed a complaint, quieted the title. We got no cooperation from the prior mortgage holder, so the new buyer had to proceed that way, but they will have that cleared up and be able to market that property without any title issues. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless there are any questions.
Any questions for the Law Director? Hearing non, thank you, sir. The next report is the Clerk of Council, Mrs. Alton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that Resolution Numbers 07 and 08-2014 were posted as required and that concludes my report.
Okay. Before we go on to new business, I would note that this month has five Mondays, the fifth Monday being on June 30. I will be speaking with council about a possibility of doing a roundtable or other activity, other meeting on that June 30. With that, I would move to new business on item number nine is their motion, Mr. Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, Ordinance Number 05-2014. This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we suspend the rules requiring reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, Ordinance Number 05-2014. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, would the clerk call the roll on the ordinance, on the motion?
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules passes 7-0. Moving now to item A, Ordinance Number 05-2014. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number 05-2014, an ordinance enacting revisions to Chapter 152 Building Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to add Section 152.25M to address the disposition of personal property on the premises of unsafe structures to be demolished by the city and to make other minor changes and corrections.
Okay. Is this, this is not for vote tonight, right? It's next week? Okay. Thank you. We will now move to Resolution under B is their motion, Mr. Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolutions 09-2014 and 10-2014 by title only, since these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and second that we suspend the rules requiring reading in full and read Resolutions Number 09-2014 and Resolutions 10-2014 by title only. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, the clerk please call the roll on the motion.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules passes 7-0. We move to Resolution 09-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 09-2014, a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Cincinnati Pops Orchestra to perform in the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of Resolution Number 09-2014.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we adopt Resolution 09-2014. Is there discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, we're very pleased to announce the scheduling of our 2014 concert on the green for Friday, July 18th on the front lawn of Emeritus, and I believe this is our 25th concert. We're recommending authorizing a contract with the Pops Orchestra in the amount of $35,000, which is the same amount as last year. We've also received donations from businesses to help offset some of the costs associated with the contract and last year we received $10,000 from businesses towards that. Emeritus, of course, is providing much valuable assistance and in-kind services such as marketing the concert, providing printing costs and pre-concert receptions and activities, and we are bringing back the fireworks display again this year. So, we thank Emeritus for that. I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing non, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 09-2014?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 09-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item C, is Resolution Number 10-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 10-2014, accepting the bid of Morton Salt Inc. to furnish salt for the 2014-2015 winter season.
Is there a motion, Councilman Southall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion that, or Resolution 10-214 be accepted for adoption.
Second.
It's moved and second that we adopt Resolution 0, Resolution 10-2014. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, this particular, this is the annual purchase of salt for the year 2014, 2015 winter season. This is the best time for that purchase and the Morton Salt Company was one of the companies that was in the bidding. So, or $76.88 a ton, which is less than the two other companies and we also, we have a situation where we were able to partner with City of Springdale so, in order to further get that, that particular rate. So, I would urge adoption of Resolution 2014.
Any further discussion? Hearing non, would the clerk call the roll on Resolution 10-2014?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution 10-2014 passes 7-0. Is there any more business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing non?